Good evening Amplus families. Thank you for joining us tonight for our virtual town hall. I am not going to waste any time and I'm just going to turn it over to Mrs. Sarah Barlow, our K-12 principal.
Good evening everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm really excited to have this chance to speak with you and to hopefully answer some questions tonight, hopefully kind of set aside some concerns, make sure that we are able to address a lot of the burning topics that keep coming up with our teachers and with our parents. There's a lot going on and I just want to first acknowledge all of the staff and the faculty that we have here at Amplus Academy has been so absolutely amazing. I don't think that there's any other school, and I've been reading about a lot of them, that has done as good a job as our staff has done in making sure that we are addressing the needs of our kids in such a hard time. It is a different world and it's an area and a time where none of us are the experts that we once felt that we were. Nobody really knows how to do all of these things and as much as we're trying to do everything the best that we can from the very beginning, what we're finding is that there's a lot of things that we have opportunities to improve upon. And so I thank you for being here. I look forward to being able to have a hopefully productive discourse. Everything that we have on this webinar tonight, we're going to go ahead and share on our website tomorrow so that our friends or neighbors, part of our community who aren't able to be with us tonight, are able to watch this later and get the information, hopefully answers to their questions too. And if not, then my door, my email is always open and I hope that we can kind of continue the conversation and make some real strong improvements for the sake of our kids, to help our staff and to move forward in a really productive way. I feel like that is probably the biggest focus and something I'd really like to encourage us all to remember that we are here for the kids, that we are trying to do all the right things and together that is the best way for us to approach that. I think that the greatest strength that we have as an Amplus Academy community is that of our community and the fact that we are invested in the wellbeing for our kids. That is a message that has resonated with me since I first was introduced to this school and it's something that I plan on continuing and making sure is a focal point for our school. So we have a lot of things that I want to discuss and a lot of you have been really great to kind of reach out ahead of time and make sure that, hold on, we're going to do a technical thing.
We're trying to get you to let me share the screen.
Oh. We're going to change hosts real quick, hold on. I think we're hosting. We're co-hosting. So we are, we're going to go ahead and kind of jump into some things. A lot of the conversation that we're going to have tonight, hopefully I can address some of your concerns. Thank you to those of you who submitted your, your questions. Probably the number one thing that we got in the, in the form that everyone submitted was when do we get to go back to school? I don't know. That's an honest answer. I know that we have control over very little in this pandemic and there are a lot of people who are governing and recommending what we should be doing and how we can best handle this situation with COVID-19. I am so pleased that we were able to roll out a hybrid version of our education plan last week. To say it was easy would not be accurate. To say it was perfect would really be inaccurate. But to say that it was done with the best intentions and the greatest of hopes would be the best thing that I could tell you. Our teachers were excited to see kids. We were happy to have students back on campus. It changes the entire vibe of the school and it was really gratifying to see the smiles from the, from the students, but also the parents who were happy to be able to participate in the manner in which they wanted to participate in their kids' education. Those of you who have been participating from home, we recognize and honor that those are decisions that are best made by the parents who are at home with their kids and who are considering all of the health concerns that are going on in our world right now. So we are glad that we are able to try something new with hybrid and we have learned a lot. Our teachers have been fantastic. I have gone home in tears many nights understanding the great burden that has been placed on them to be a different type of a teacher. We've got teachers that have decades of experience who feel like they are brand-new teachers doing all new things. There are teachers who are feeling like there are not enough minutes in the day and they're right, there aren't. And so we are considering all of the feedback. I want to especially acknowledge those of you who have sent kind and gracious emails, supportive things to the teachers. Thank you for doing that. That has touched their hearts. I think that has lifted them up when they have felt really kind of trampled down by the weight of this responsibility. It's really hard to be a teacher who loves their kids so much and knows that they cannot be the same person that they want to be for them because of this current situation with COVID-19 and the pandemic and the restrictions and the safety concerns and all of, all of the things that we're contending with now in education. The industry itself is making big shifts. We're, we're getting data and information all the time and I like data. I like to know what we're looking at and where we're going. But frankly, Amplus Academy is blazing some trails and our teachers here are being asked to do extraordinary things. Taking into consideration that we are now a self-management, self-managed school, there are really wonderful things that we are celebrating and that we've been able to accomplish them during the pandemic. That being said, I know on the other side, for those of you who are disconnected and not at school every day, it's really hard to feel those same things and to know where we are building upon the great foundations that have already been laid before us. I hear that and we want to do a better job in making sure that we keep you as parents in the loop to understand what those conversations are. For those of you who volunteered to be part of our parent archer committee, thank you. Thank you for the nice and kind things that you've done for our staff. Thank you for volunteering your time to be on different committees. Thank you for those of you who are going to help us when we evaluate our curriculum. All of those things are really important conversations that we truly want our parents to be a part of those conversations and I welcome the feedback for those of you who have submitted the surveys that we're sending. We'll send another one out this week because it's hopeful for me as a principal to go through and read these things. So thank you for all of that. Without any other further ado, I want to start to address some questions and we're going to kind of start with the first question. All right. We're going to go ahead and I'm going to ask for some help. My wonderful assistant principals are all here and so I'm going to have them share with me the different questions. If you guys can go ahead and help with the chat as they come in. So far, we're, we're looking pretty. So we're going to go ahead and start with some of the questions that you submitted. That's right. If you have questions that I'm not addressing, please submit them in the chat and then we can, I'll try to be good about repeating it to make sure that you heard which question I'm answering. So back to that question, when can kids come back to school? We're not sure and I'm being very cautious as far as when we want to plan to have them back to make sure that we are rolling out First Things First. So we just went back to hybrid for our K through 3 students last week and we are taking the information, the data, the feedback, everything from all of the people and we're making adjustments. One of the things that we recognize very quickly and a lot of it has to do with the fact that November has prevented us from having time for our teachers on Wednesdays just with holidays and parent-teacher conferences today, is that we need to make sure that we protect and prioritize our teachers' time and their energy so that they have time to do the quality of work that they want to do. And so we're looking at different shifts that we can still maintain our rigorous academic schedule that also takes into consideration what's healthy for kids. And so we're looking at adjusting the time schedule, still having recess and lunch because we feel like those are part of the productive social and emotional aspects of socializing in schools and so we're going to keep those parts of our program. And also making sure that we are working with our families who are doing distance ed at home so that we can make sure that they understand what the schedule is like because even though your kids may not be coming to school, everyone is now participating in hybrid. We also heard very loud and clear how hard it is for our teachers to do all of the jobs. And even though we have teacher support staff who are so fantastic to be here every day to support our teachers, we need more of them. And so we are working with our human resources department right now. We are vetting many candidates who want to work here and we're grateful for that response. So as they come here and they are interviewing and applying for these jobs, then we are going to as quickly as possible place teacher support with each of our teachers in their classroom. They need the help. They want to make better videos. They can't necessarily help students who are in their class while they're trying to run a camera and then to make sure it gets downloaded so it's put onto the Google Classroom. All of those things that we feel like we can solve and resolve and our goal for that is that we will be able to do most of that before we return from Thanksgiving break. That being said, that is a lot of things that we are trying to put into place and so we appreciate your grace and patience while we are working through that through Thanksgiving. The communication with that will be shared on all of our platforms, our website, our social media. We will send emails home. There are a lot of things that we're all trying to manage and sometimes you don't see the emails and sometimes you don't have time to go to our website and look at the information. I encourage you all to follow our social media accounts. @AmplusAcademy will help you understand what we have coming and you can look at our Facebook page and you can watch our Instagram account if that helps you. We want to make sure we encourage you to do that. Our next round of students that we're planning on bringing back, when we are ready and make sure we can do so safely and that we can do so successfully, will be our 4th through 7th graders, our 4th through 6th in the upper elementary, but our 7th graders who are transitioning into secondary school are really, are, are letting us know that there are a group of them that want to come back. And so we'll be making plans on how to do that best, how to do it most successfully, how to again make sure that we are maintaining all of the social distance guidelines, make sure that everybody understands what the procedures are and that we will be, you know, making accommodations for that. It's, it's, it takes into consideration all of the people. Our operations team has been amazing to make the changes with us. Our, our teachers have, you know, been willing to work from home if we need their space. They're willing to come into the building if we need their expertise. They're just every day responding to, to the needs of, of the kids and I really again want to just thank them for that. The, another question that somebody asked was about older kids coming back to school. And given the ongoing situation, we have to roll these things out slowly. It's been the recommendation of the charter authority that we be very careful that we don't bite off more than we can chew. And we're, we've been watching other schools to make sure that we can be a little bit better and make sure that we are moving towards, you know, setting everybody up for success, that we don't bring too many kids back too fast, that we vet our procedures. For example, we had several situations today. We had to send kids home because they came to school with runny noses or they weren't feeling very well. And you know as well as I do that everything right now is a COVID symptom and we've asked our families who are participating for the safety of all of our staff and our, and the kids in the room and their families and the whole community that you just keep your kids at home. So we're making sure that there's no more than 15 kids in a classroom, which is based on the square footage of each of our classrooms and at least 50% if not smaller than that to that capacity of that, of that space. We're teaching kids all about the, what it means to socially distance and what three feet looks like to a kindergartner. It's been really, really amazing to watch these teachers teach kids how far exactly three feet is. And so we're, we're doing those things and teaching new structures and styles and, and all sorts of things in education that we've never had to do before. For the kids who are learning from home, that means learning how to communicate when a teacher's attention is pulled different directions. It's learning how to be patient and understand that the teacher is one person who can give all the attention. And, and parents, I know that is hard. I know that it's hard for you to be watching your kid who wants their attention. And in normal days, in front of the teacher, the teacher's able to do that miraculously, but you get an insight into the million different hats that those teachers wear every day and your patience and your kindness with them is really, really appreciated. For those of you who feel like you're co-teaching, I've had a couple of conversations with parents who say, "I'm a co-teacher. I feel like I'm on your staff." You are. And, and we credit you with a lot of the progress that our kids are making. We know that we've had to make some changes with some curriculum and we have done so because as we made the move to be a self-managed school, we started to do some really honest conversations with ourselves as school leaders to start looking at some data points that we could not go on ignoring and following the direction that the state of Nevada and our charter authority had given us. And so we made sure that we had those conversations with people who were invested in the success in the school. We talked a lot about what we keep, what we improve upon and what for the sake of the kids we needed to change. And so a lot of those have impacted you. If you've been with the school for a long time, you are used to certain things happening a certain way and combined with the pandemic and some changes, especially yes, I know with math, it's been hard. And so those of you who are co-teaching, you know, look for nominations for teachers of the month from our, from our parents who are working from home because that's, that's a real thing that I think that we should honor and I just want you to know that I appreciate you being a part of that for, with us. One of the questions, I don't know, do we have questions in the chat? I just keep talking. Um, we can talk about that. I mean, the safety and security of our kids when we are on an online platform is a new area that we are all learning and adapting to. Our teachers are being so conscientious about not showing other kids faces because what is normally a very private interaction within a classroom and in a safe environment is now being broadcast all around, sometimes the world. And so as you travel and you're, you know, having your son or daughter watch their, you know, English class in the middle of a cafe somewhere, then, you know, we're, we're very cognizant that we're also broadcasting all of that class around to open places. And so the parent involvement actually in these classrooms, we're trying to keep them as restricted as possible. So when you're trying to talk to a teacher in the middle of the lesson, it would be no different than if, than if when we were in a brick and mortar building, you barge into the classroom. And so we're trying to have those conversations, you know, to, to figure out those avenues and we don't even realize that's a problem because again, you're co-teaching, you got a question, I'm trying to help my kid with this math assignment. And so we are trying to make sure that the volunteers that we have, we are able to utilize them in the, in the most safe and respectful way. That was probably some of the best commentary that we got back after the first day, which, you know, we had two day ones, but with the hybrid, I appreciated those, those parents who reached out and said, "Can I help? I can tell this is so hard for those teachers." Thank you for that. And, and we, and while we're trying to protect that, security-wise for the, for our staff and for the kids, well, for the kids, that's where that conversation came. Like we need to be willing to invest more in staff that can be part of our community or part of our faculty, part of our staff. And so that's, that's kind of how we got to that point. Parent volunteers, if you really want to be helpful, please join the pack. Please join the parent archer committee because the teachers need some TLC. And so I know that there's plans to bring in some lunch before Thanksgiving next week, which is awesome, when it's one less thing for your teacher to have to do to have to pack their lunch that morning because they know they're going to get lunch when they get to work. They feel good about that. We're talking too about the holiday gift campaign and, you know, that would be a great way to volunteer and to help. I don't ever like to turn away people who want to help. So if it's something that you're really, like I've got to be involved, I know I can contribute, please shoot me an email and we can, we can find a spot and hopefully put your good intentions to, to good use. Is there any more questions in the chat? Okay. So one of the things I want to talk about for our elementary, because this is the elementary platform, is I want to talk to you a little bit about the curriculum. I need to talk to you just kind of about some things time-wise that have really, that have kind of happened. And, and then as we get there, we're going to, I want to talk about the different programs we're using. In June, our school board decided that they were going to no longer move forward with the, the management company that we had, that we would be a self-managed company, a business, and that that is going to be all about the education that's best for the kids that we have here at our school. So in July, they moved forward with the transition committee and part of that committee were staff members. We have staff members who are parents and we had a parent who was on the committee. It had two of our board members, our interim managing director, and then we had our human resources director and finance director. And then we had a charter consultant who was part of the transition committee that our school board contracted with to make sure that we were doing all of the right things and to make sure that we were making sure that this transition went for the, in the best interest of the kids. So that was in July. I was hired, went through, I would say, a pretty rigorous interview process. I was hired in the end of July and came into a really exciting time. We hired the rest of the administrative team. We started placing staff. We were really, really pumped and excited. Our director of student support, Nikulit, had put together a re-entry plan and we were moving forward with the anticipation that we would be in a hybrid setting. However, the pandemic being what it is, that changed our course pretty dramatically and really quickly and, and what was then kind of a strongly suggested and then a mandated situation, we were not able to come back in the hybrid plan that we had originally hoped to implement. So we came back instead and just all distance ed. That was a really quick turn. There were, like I said, many late nights with a lot of really important conversations that were being had because there was a whole new management team of academically-minded people who were looking and vetting the programs that had been used before, some of which we were no longer allowed to use because they were considered intellectual property of the previous management company. And we started to look at our numbers and our student populations and we started looking at all of the different aspects of our school so that we could start to make informed decisions. One of the issues that we wanted to rectify and resolve is that all of the hard work that our community, but most importantly, our faculty and staff had been putting forth for the kids was not reflected in the data that the state was getting. And the state and the charter authority wanted to have conversations with all of the schools, like they do because this is their job, about our accountability and what we were doing to make sure that we were making moves to improve. Now, this is really exciting. If you're a person like me who loves all things school and together with the team, we started looking at things like our reported ELL numbers, our English language learners. Prior to this year, they had identified about 30 of our students who were considered ELL. This year, we have 170. That's a huge part of our population that has increased and that we're excited about so that we can help those students grow. Our free and reduced lunches, those students who qualify for additional assistance that way has increased from 14% to 30%. Now, we know we're expanding. We know we're a school that's growing. We know that we have a really wonderful program that helps kids be successful. But we also recognize that our population is a diverse population and that we are happy to be able to have all sorts of different people and families as part of our community. And so taking in those considerations, we started talking about the curriculum and what had been used before and what wasn't. I'm going to see, we're going to share the screen. Again, this is for elementary and if on our website you see that you go to the academics tab and you click on elementary, we've posted this after hearing some...
It's going to be posted soon.
Oh, it's going to be posted right here and coming soon. The, the information about our, our curriculum review. We are so excited to have a conversation about what we need to do with our math. I know a lot of families really enjoyed and loved math and math, that that was something that they used in the ability-based groupings. But one of the things that concerned me when I came in is to find out that those students who were getting five hours of ability-based instruction, they were not being exposed to their grade-level content, which was really concerning, but also explained why some of our test scores indicated that they hadn't been even exposed to some of their grade-level content. When we start looking at star ratings and things like that, there are certain measures that the state looks at and our test scores are part of that. So in being accountable to the charter authority and being accountable to the state, we have to take those things into consideration. And yes, in the middle of the pandemic, it is a hard time to make those changes, but we couldn't in good conscience know that we were doing a disservice to our kids and just continue it for another year. We didn't intend to cause more grief to any of our families, I promise you. That is never our intention. That is not anything that we want to have happen. But we do want to make sure that you understand and this document will help you. I know it's really small. Here we go. We're going to zoom it out a little bit.
I'm actually going to open up the document itself so that you can see it better.
But our wonderful assistant principals at elementary, Tiffany Banks and Jackie Jackson, put this together so that we could understand where we were with things. I want to go through, a lot of you who've been with this school for a while will know some of these subjects and you'll recognize what they are. And then I can kind of give you a little bit of history about what we found when we started diving into things. Our core, we are a core knowledge school. That is part of our charter. It's something that was written in from the very beginning. Core Knowledge is a program that supports the classic liberal arts studies that this school was founded on. I love it. I think it's fantastic to be a classic, a school of the classics that focuses on our, the, the liberal arts education that includes our use of Latin. It includes supporting performing arts, really looking at ancient civilizations and understanding things about them. I really love that part about the classic literature education model and Core Knowledge supports that. So in language arts, prior, you can see with the APA curriculum, we were using about 50% of the Core Knowledge as directed, again, by our previous management company. Because of the way the management company decided to run the school before, it was dictated to teachers what they could and could not address in class. And so when they said this part of Core Knowledge, Language Arts, we're going to use, the teachers did not have the flexibility or ability to be able to say, "Well, I'd really like to use this part as well." It was, it was not part of the discussion. And so in moving forward, Amplus recognized that Core Knowledge, Language Arts had a really good program that met Nevada academic content standards. That is the academic standards by which Nevada mandates that public schools meet. And so the tests that we use within our state are also aligned to those standards. So again, if we want our kids to do well on these test measures, that will then reflect all of the other good things that we have going on at the school. It's important that we first recognize that there are standards and that they have to meet these certain thresholds at certain, with certain grade levels that they do. Our Core Knowledge history is still Core Knowledge history. The difference is that we had to shift some of the units to align with the Nevada academic content standards and we added Nevada, our home for social studies because in 4th grade, we want our Nevada students to understand what a wonderful place this is to live. So they've implemented that so that they would be able to meet the 4th grade social studies standards. Core Knowledge Science is still Core Knowledge Science, however, in 6th grade, we have implemented CK-12 science standards to meet the needs of those, that middle bridge, preparing kids to move into high school where they have science that starts with biology and chemistry and there are standards by subject. So our 6th grade students who had previously used Core Knowledge Science are now using CK-12. And again, it's, it's to align to what they're supposed to know by, when they're in 6th grade. Okay, math. Our core math program, that was the class or the, the...
Part of the homeroom.
Part of the homeroom where they got their grade level instruction was... Part of the homeroom where they got their, um, grade level instruction was, was negligible. Classes on average would teach thirty-two, thirty minutes to an hour of their, um, math lessons at their grade level per week. It wasn't a daily conversation. It wasn't anything like that because we had the ability-based math groups. I have to tell you that as somebody who was looking at some of this stuff with secondary, I recognized with the people, help of the teachers that we had here, we had a huge gap. And that our test performance on the ACT, which is the test measure that gets kids into college, was really low compared to what I was expecting it to be from a school that, um, is a college preparatory school. A college preparatory school should have test scores that allow kids to get into any college that they want to. And so wait, I started to kind of ask some questions and it, as luck would have it, a K through twelve school allows me to go down the hall and ask the questions, like, what are we, how are we, where are the gaps? Why are we missing? We've got kids who've been here for five or six years and, and yep, we're, there's a problem. Where is this coming from? And so we started to have a conversation about how the, there was some gaps with the math program and that, um, it wasn't preparing them to be in the place that they needed to be by the time they were in eleventh grade. They had already acknowledged that the Core Math Program was based on Utah's state standards. The Nevada-based standards means, meant that we had to make some pretty massive changes. Saxon math that, uh, did so well with a lot of kids in their ability-based groups was used mostly, um, and that's what everybody came to maybe love, maybe you hated it, but love. Uh, and we had to make some changes because it was not lining up with what they should be doing on their grade levels. And, and I acknowledge that this does not mean that it's going to, what we have this year with Engage New York, uh, that it's going to be something that we are going to continue unless we can say that we have vetted through all of the other programs and that it's the best thing to go. I can tell you that in our research, uh, with the help of the consultant, uh, in talking to different charter schools uh, around the valley, that, um, the Engage New York is the most popular math curriculum in the nation, um, according to a RAM study. Um, a lot of people say, well, yeah, it's free and that's why. And then maybe that's the case, but when we are looking at making sure that we're going through the program and aligning it to standards, thank you, um, that we are doing, um, doing it justice. Those of you who signed up on the PAC Committee, that's our next move. We're going to evaluate a math program that will meet the needs of our kids K through twelve. Um, and so I anticipate that this is also going to be an area with Core Math that is going to change, that, uh, we're going to make adjustments. I just want kids to learn math. I just need them to know how to do all the things so that when they are in tenth and eleventh grade, they have access to geometry and that they are, um, meeting trigonometry standards, that they can perform the algebraist things that they need to do and that their thinking is critical enough to be able to process through general computations and other scenarios that, that will require them to perform so that they can get into the colleges that they want or that they can be successful in the careers that they choose. Those of you who are really invested in this, please, please make sure you reach out to our PAC leaders and, and sign up for that committee because, um, our Assistant Principals have asked for a lot of information from a lot of different companies. Um, and we're, you know, talking about where we're gonna head when it comes to math and we'd love, uh, your input. The Shirley Grammar Program, we're still using Shirley Grammar. That's in grades first through six. In grades one through three, Adventures in Language Writing, we are continuing that, um, in grades one through three. And then Cursive, which is, is lost art in a lot of schools, is not lost on us, however. And distance ed, it is really impossible for a teacher who is teaching behind a computer screen to show the actual teaching forms that are required with Cursive. Some of our teachers have taken on the challenge, but we have eliminated the, the mandate for this time period while we're in, um, distance or hybrid learning. Um, we are encouraging our students to continue to use it. We are encouraging the students who want to learn it to, to continue to practice it. So it's not going anywhere. It's just considering our current situation. It's really difficult for us to be able to do all of the things. Um, our Language for Learning Logic, our Language for Thinking Logic, our Comprehension A Logic and our Comprehension B Logic, those were all programs that we used K through three. They are on pause during distance ed. Um, it's not that we're throwing them away. We're currently evaluating them. But what we're doing is looking to see if it's redundant, if what we're doing already with Core Language Arts is meeting those standards and, and covering that kind of thinking. The Trivium is a very important part of a classic education. So making sure that we are, um, honoring those, uh, the phases, the grammar phase, the logic phase, all of those things are kind of set up with those programs and we would just, are trying to make sure that we are honoring that while not, um, giving extra things to do or busy work. Writing by Design is a new writing program. The writing program that we had before is, um, was IP, it was intellectual, it was, yeah, intellectual property that we didn't get to keep. And so Writing by Design is actually, um, a program that goes throughout elementary school, but we're vetting it right now with our fourth through sixth graders with our upper elementary. Uh, it is Nevada Academic Content Standards aligned. Um, right now, we're just using it for four through six. Um, we needed to add a higher quality writing program. Writing was one of the standards that we recognized were, um, oftentimes being neglected. Um, and as a classic education model school, writing is a big part of, of that curriculum. So, um, we are using Writing by Design. Um, the voracious vocabulary, uh, that was also used in four through six was part of the worldly, wordly wise program. Um, wordly wise, um, we are now using that at Amplus Academy for vocabulary in grades four through six. However, we're actually using the full program. In education, you can purchase programs and then a lot of times you just keep using the, the, um, resources without necessarily implementing the full program. And we have made the decision that that was a valid program with a voracious vocabulary and we are now fully implementing with fidelity, the wordly wise program. Um, the reading mastery, we're using reading mastery, um, that we were using in ability-based groups. We're using that right now in our kindergarten classes. Uh, it's used for phonetic awareness, for blending and decoding. It's a great program. We, um, love reading mastery for those reasons. Um, the reading mastery in grades one through six, um, is something right now that's technically on hold just because it's not feasible during distance ed. It's not that we have anything against it. Uh, but SmartEANS, which was part of the program that we purchased with the Achie three thousand suite, uh, is a program that meets the kids where they are and it, it moves intellectually with them so that as they continue to answer questions correctly and they continue to master different standards, they get moved on within SmartEANS. It's my understanding that when SmartEANS is working and we can all get logged in, which is, I know, been a bit of an issue, that it's great and the kids love it and that some of you parents are like, okay, enough SmartEANS, but, um, we like that. And we also know that there's some kids who've made it all the way through the program, which is really exciting because we're able to accelerate their learning and move them into maybe the Achie three thousand platform, um, where they're, um, exposed to, to the higher-lexile content and, um, some deeper level thinking. The LBDI that we used for grades three through twelve with the ability-based groups with reading. Dr. Carpenter, who was the Charter School Consultant who came, had extensive experience using Achie three thousand. It's a company that's been around since the year two thousand. It's been a couple dec- embedded it for a couple of different decades to perf- to allow students to have access to content that, um, with consistent exposure increases their reading scores, um, and their ability in reading comprehension. Achie three thousand also, um, has different platforms that are specifically geared to helping our English language learners so that we can have language services and decoding devices that help with our special populations. Um, we appreciate that, knowing that we were going to be in a hybrid model, um, initially, and now then into a distance and now back into hybrid. We appreciate the fact that Achie three thousand, um, was recommended to us. Um, and to be totally frank, we're evaluating it and we're looking at it and we're trying to make sure that we have the data to see if it's what's best for our school. Knowing that we had that with our English Language Arts, we recognize that we need ability-based opportunities with our math. Um, while Saxon is something that we're looking at as a whole curriculum for grade-level curriculum, um, we brought in Map Accelerator and then there's a couple of programs that we're just bringing in for the, um, K through two grades through Khan Academy. Uh, and there's another platform called Zern that I know our second grade teachers are having great success with. Zern works alongside Engage New York. Uh, Map Accelerator works alongside with the, um, the Nevada Academic Content Standards. And so having these things at our disposal, um, for our different, um, our, our youngest students, our, our K through eight math students, um, is helping us kind of make sure that we're meeting them where they're at. I do want to tell you, parents, that this is an intuitive program. Map Accelerator, if you're using it or any of the Khan programs, are going to be very supportive programs, but if you're supporting your kid by doing those programs, you can find easily that your fourth grader is suddenly given, not suddenly, but eventually given problems that were probably more equivalent to your ability and maybe Algebra II, maybe some calculus. We're not trying to stress them out, but we just want them to go through the process with, with their own mind and their own skills so that we can kind of watch that and the teachers are monitoring their progress within their own Map Accelerator, um, Khan Academy and Zern programs. Finally, for our sixth graders, another program that came with the Achie three thousand suite was Actively Learn. Actively Learn is a high, um, interest, uh, reading program that supplements, um, for the teacher's instruction. It can be used with all subjects across the, um, curriculum spectrum. So it can be used in band, band class, it can be used in science class, it can be used in social studies. Wherever the teachers need additional support, Actively Learn is a platform that teachers can use to make sure that they can do that, uh, to have supports that they need. So, and there's, it's interactive and the teachers can be part of that conversation with the kids or it's something that they can assign for homework. It's something the students should be able to do independently. Uh, we tried to synergize a lot of the logins for the online platform by, uh, implementing clever. We hope that your, um, your son or daughter has had a chance to click on the clever button that should be at the top of their, uh, their Google suite when they log into their, uh, Google account, their Archer Mail account. Um, when they do that, if they just click on the clever, then the teachers have let us know which programs they're using and then the kids should just be able to click on that and get logged in. Um, we're, we're finding with distance ed, there's a lot of sales pitches that tell us it's gonna be really great and totally graceful. Uh, and then it, it feels a little bit chunky and it feels a little bit rough. So, um, we appreciate your feedback on that and your patience. As always, our communication policy is to encourage you to speak with your, with your teacher and to make sure that they know what your individual situation is. Some of you are doing things asynchronously because you work or that it just works better for your, your son or daughter to sleep a little bit extra and you wanna come in and get the videos. Uh, and we're trying to make sure that we're doing all of the different, um, platforms so that you can be most successful at school. Um, we're not perfect and we're trying to get better every day. And that, I would say, is probably the biggest part of our vision going forward, that we love what we had here, um, last year and for the years before. We are grateful for the sacrifices and the time that all of the people who've been part of this community for a lot of years have put into the school. And we are so glad that we're able to just continue to improve and to make things, um, better. We want smarter kids. We want kinder kids. We want better people. And we are so proud of the work that we are doing and the hardest of times. Uh, I can't think, and I've studied education for more than, well, two decades at least. And I can't think of a time where education has gone through such, um, extensive, um, turmoil. And, and our kids, our families, we're all feeling that. So together, I know that that is the best, uh, place to be and working towards a common goal to, um, keep the kids at the front of our, our minds and our hearts is, is the best way to approach all things with education. Uh, education is evolving. It is meeting the needs and finding out where the kids are today because it could be very different from yesterday and it will probably be different tomorrow. And again, I just want to thank each of you for being here and for the, the support that you all have shown. You have some questions? Now I'm gonna go to those. I'm also gonna say it's five forty-five. So I'm gonna answer these questions, which will probably segue into the secondary portion. So you're welcome to stay if you're here with the elementary cadre and, um, all night or you can go when you need. All right. So, here's some questions. Okay, here we go. Okay. The rumors about shutting down, um, have to do with the mitigation levels in the county. If the governor or it would be the governor, right? I'm looking at, Mr. Hewlett. He's our COVID czar. He's our COVID czar. He's our, uh, main go-to point for that. If, if, if our hands are tied and we cannot continue to run school the way that we have in a hybrid, then we will have to comply. We're not, we're not that rebellious. Our understanding, as it is right now, is that so long as we follow the COVID protocols that have been put into place, uh, that we'll be con- able to continue our practices. And I, I want to give a shout out to all of these little kids who are so amazing with their masks. They come in, they put them on, they're not complaining. Um, we have to remind the adults in this, in the building more often than we do the kids to, you know, pull their mask up over their nose and things like that. But, um, we are, um, looking forward to, to, again, continuing in a safe, uh, and methodical method of, of coming back into hybrid. Um, so we plan on moving forward and maintaining what we're doing. Uh, we have run the numbers and that we, we know that we have at our greatest, um, attendance, we have about four hundred and fifty people who are on our campus. That includes staff, support staff, kids, um, anybody, even visitors, taking that into consideration. We know that if we have at any one time nine cases, nine positive cases, that it would be the best, in the best entrance for our entire community, that we would shut down. Uh, the COVID protocols, we're also going to share, uh, and post on our website, um, that have been vetted to make sure that we know exactly what we're doing, um, when it comes to exposure. There may be, if, if, uh, if there's a positive case of COVID and it has been, um, shared with a class, then that class that has been on hybrid will be moved to distance. And once we have nine individual positive cases of that at any one time, then it would be best for our school to go all distance. So we could do kind of a whole reset. So the rumors about being shut down were, um, well, I am, I'm, I'm kind of over rumors. So we're kind of dealing with the realities and, um, we are, we are moving forward. We just don't have the time or energy to, to worry so much about the rumors. So. Okay, what's next?
When is the other campus going to be done being built?
All right, the new campus. Um, I was over there today. Uh, it looks amazing. It is not finished. If you're driven by, you've probably seen that. COVID has impacted the, the building, um, permits and, um, there were some polls and just communicate, it just has been hard. Uh, and so we're obviously behind the schedule. It's looking like the building is going to be, um, oh gosh, available, um, for us to start moving and end of December.
Before Christmas.
Before Christmas. Now, we recognize, I'm looking at the calendar. Um, that is a massive major shift for our entire school. Probably about three weeks before the end of the semester as a quarter is ending. Um, it's a, a big task to make sure we can get everything in there, but, um, I'm looking at what's gonna be the best timeline-wise to make sure that we're using all of our resources, um, and, and expanding things in a timely manner that won't be disruptive to the education and that works with the teachers and stuff. So we are hopeful that we, I've been hopeful that the campus is gonna, is gonna open since August. But it's looking like end of December, um, that we'll have the certificate of occupancy that we can get in there. Uh, we have carpet, we have, um, doors, the concrete was poured, palm trees and landscaping are in, uh, and it's beautiful. It looks so great. It, it looks great. Other questions? All right.
Hmm, are there a non-gaming substitute for learning for SmartEANS?
Um, a non-gaming substitute for SmartEANS, um, based on the, I wonder if we can take the information. I'm looking at Mrs. Banks and seeing for SmartEANS. Uh, I, I, I hear you. I, I'm guessing this maybe stems from like, there's already so much screen time. If we can avoid more screen time with our kids, what can we do to, to help them? I, I hear you. I'm guessing this maybe stems from like, there's already so much screen time. If we can avoid more screen time with our kids, what can we do to, to help them? It really just kind of depends on the kid. I would urge, I don't know who's asking the question. So, if that was your question, I would urge you to reach out to your child's teacher and let them know that that is something that you're interested in. There's of course, reading programs that are going to meet kids where they are, where they can do, do reading mastery, books and things like that. And it's, it's to engage them in the actual reading practices and things that they are invested in. And so, but we can, we can help you with those things if that's what you're trying to avoid. And again, just communication with the teacher that that, that's your goal. That's what you're trying to do. You're not trying to, you know, again, rebel against Smartians or anything like that, but you're just concerned about the screen time that your son or daughter is having, then the teacher can, would work with you and be able to address those needs. So, for, for the, the question was, is there a reason they can't have snack time? There's, there's a lot of information that they have to get in and the three hours that they're here. There are protocol concerns when it comes to eating in the classroom that we have to be very aware of. So that may have, that, that's a big consideration. Our kindergarten classes right now are the fortunate classes where they have the aides right there in the classroom with them. But it's still a lot of work just to teach those sweet babies how to just sit at a desk. There was a cute little, a cute little one that wanted to throw his leg up on the desk every time he was trying to get comfortable to learn a lesson. And we had to remind him that he might be able to do that when he was at home, but now that he's sitting at a desk, it's a little bit awkward to have his foot up by his, by his, writing assignments. So.
Okay, there are days when there are no parents available in the house to assist with questions or challenges with curriculum. Is there something available for students if they need extra help or?
Okay, so yeah, that's a great question. I, I don't know, is that for elementary? Does it matter? For any kid? So the question, yeah, so the question is, for those of you who have families where there's no adult really available to help kids if they have questions, what should they do? Is there someplace where they, where they can go? We do have a, an email that they can use and that is, info, info at Archer, info at amplus.academy and then support, at ArcherMail.org. That support email is, is going to be probably one of the quickest responses that your son or daughter would get if they're working at home and they have a question about things. It goes through one, one hub and then it gets directed to whoever it needs to. So maybe it's a counselor's question. That was one of the questions. How do I know who my son or daughter's counselor is? It, it goes by alpha last name, so, or grade level. So for our secondary students, A through L is Angie Sanchez, Angelica Sanchez. And then M through Z is Ms. Tanya Lisa Smythe. But all those things are posted on our website, or you can just email support at ArcherMail.org and we can do that. As always, our communication policy, like I said earlier, is to contact the teachers and to find out what they are, what, and see if they can help first. So, our teachers are loving the interaction they get to have with a kid on a Google Meet. And a lot of them will schedule those accordingly to what works with a family's schedule or to make sure that those Wednesdays that we have open, that we can make sure that they have some one-on-one FaceTime with the teacher. So please reach out to the teachers or support. So, we would really love to have more kids take advantage of that opportunity to talk with the teachers. Those are some of my favorite reports when teachers say, you know, I had this great talk with, you know, this teacher. And, and some of our teachers have even made appointments with our kids who are struggling or who just need the extra support to come in on Wednesday so they can meet with them one-on-one. They've taken the initiative to do that. Thank you to the families who have rearranged their schedule to make sure the kids can be here. And if it's something that you think that would work great for your kid to be able to have just an hour or a half hour or just a, you know, short review or something like that, please reach out to the teachers to do that.
If kids show up without a mask, will we be supplying them with one or replace them if they're soiled or wet?
Yes, we have already done that. The question is if it, if a student shows up without a mask, can we help them and make sure they have a mask? Absolutely. They are provided one if it gets, if it gets soiled, if they eat it, they sometimes start to talk and then they forget it's in their mouth. And, and then it just kind of disintegrates a little bit. So we've given extra masks to all of our teachers. We have cleaning supplies in all of the classrooms and our teacher support have been trained on how to make sure that we are maintaining all of the cleanliness requirements and above and beyond. Again, our ops team, I can't say enough great things about them. They've been so helpful to make sure that we get all of that to the teachers. And that the kids are washing their hands and we sanitize in and we sanitize out. And, you know, again, some life skills, like you don't need a whole pump of sanitizer in your hand. It's enough to make sure that you're getting the sanitizer on, but we're not bathing in the sanitizer. So we're learning those things.
And I know you touched on it a minute ago, is realizing that the kids that are online are kind of being lost. And so we're looking at adding additional supports.
Yep, for sure. So let me just address the, those of you who are, are part of our hybrid program, but at home. Some of you on those off days when you're not at school and some of you who are just have opted to do distance all the time, are feeling a little bit lost. The teachers know that that's a concern. That was their feedback on day one. Ms. Barlow, I cannot continue to, I'm shortchanging the kids in my room if I'm trying to talk to the kids on, on distance. If I'm trying to talk to kids on, it, it, again, it's hard to do all of those things. So for our, our kids who are doing hybrid in K through three, we are, we are hiring staff as quickly as we can find the most qualified candidates and those that are a good fit with our teaching style and our program so that they can be in there and they can assist the teacher. They are not the teacher. They are teacher support. And so they are there to help monitor and, and address the questions and to help the students through the, you know, a lot of times the kids are like, I don't know what page we're on. And, and you know, by the time the teacher who's helping the kids in the classroom get on the right page, they need to have somebody who can just say, okay, this is what it looks like and hold it up to the camera because the other teacher is, you know, busy. Or maybe it's the teacher who's here on camera with the, the kids who are at home and the teacher support is going around making sure. So, again, all of our kindergarten teachers are at a one-to-one right now. And, and my plan is that grade by grade, we're going to add that to first grade, second grade, and third grade. And so, we hope to have that, that done. And then, as we look at further rollouts for four through six, we're looking at, you know, there's, different ways to do hybrids so that we can make sure that we have those kids. And then in seventh grade, of course, they've got six different teachers. So we've got to make sure that we are making those arrangements accordingly too. So, when it comes to schedule of just further rolling things out, let me just say, as a mom, I am very cognizant of everyone's schedules. And so we're not going to try to make your life more complicated by giving you a different day to come with your fourth through sixth grader, or fourth through seventh grader. We're going to try to make sure that we can keep everything as synchronized as possible. I know that's really important for, for our families.
Will there be sports opportunities for kindergarten kids?
Yes. Maybe not right now. So, we are so excited. I hope you were able to see the video where we introduced our new athletic director, Tyrell Cooper. He's been fantastic. He's putting in a lot of, programs and opportunities. A lot of that is governed right now by what we can do with youth sports. We are waiting to find out what competitions we're actually able to hold based on what different schools are offering. But when it comes to our sports program, it is going to be a community-wide program, K through 12. And we are so excited to think about having the high school basketball team come to watch our kindergartners play basketball. Maybe even help be coaches is probably one of the most, like I just got a little bit of cold chills just talking about it. I just think it'll be so fun as, as a community to be part of those programs, to have older siblings be there for younger siblings and vice versa. I just think it's really exciting. So yes, those, those are coming. Thank you. All of the interest was so exciting and we are pretty sure that we could run a whole league in some of the sports just by ourselves, based on the interest. So, we're looking for that. And if you're looking for opportunities to volunteer, contact T Cooper at amplus.academy and let him know that you're interested in, in helping with some of those coaching opportunities because we'll be moving into that, into the spring.
Maybe just a quick recap, since we're kind of technically on the secondary line, but if anybody has any additional questions?
Okay, last chance for elementary-only questions. If you want to put those, I'm going to hydrate for a minute. Sorry, thank you. And then we're going to kind of shift into secondary.
Do another screen share and go over the COVID guidelines or no?
I'm going to email. Yeah, there's a, there's a list of COVID guidelines that we're going to send out. It has to do with, it's, it's standard protocol, but it, it's specific to Amplus and how we're going to handle all of the COVID. Maybe that's a good segue that we can kind of just go over if it applies to both. Can you go ahead and share that? So we're going to go ahead and share our screen. Again, this will be available for everyone who wants to go to the website tomorrow and just see. If you're considering bringing, you know, having your son or daughter participate in hybrid, then, you know, maybe this will bring some peace of mind. If they're already here, then you can, know what we have coming or what we're doing. A lot of the responsibility for hybrid being a success is shared with our, with our families. And so, and then there are certain things that we are mandated to do, certain protocols and procedures. It is recommended that students get tested if they show any of the following symptoms of COVID-19. Those symptoms include the fever over 100.4, chills, cough, shortness of breath, fatigue, muscle or body aches, a headache, new loss of taste or smell, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting, and diarrhea. Okay, I'm a mom. I've said that. This pretty much covers the gamut. Short of a broken bone or a known ongoing situation with your, with your child, it's pretty much covers all of the things. Fatigue, there's a lot of our kids who are just tired in the morning. And when we're walking them into the building, they're like, I'm sleepy. And I'm like, are, are you fatigued? No. They, you know, they're, they're tired. And so, we try to ask, we're asking that the parents kind of vet that out in the morning. If they have siblings that are demonstrating any of these symptoms and you think those kids have been exposed or they're starting to say, I don't feel good either, please have them can deck their learning through Distance Ed. It's just not worth the risk to send them to school to then share the germs that ends up being COVID that then puts us at nine cases. That has to shut down the whole thing. So please just be really aware that any of these symptoms, it's just better to send them home. We had a lot of kids who got on our spinners the first week of school and they got a bad case of the pukes. And we know from our experience, it's because the spinners make kids throw up. However, we don't know for sure that it couldn't be the COVID. So we have to send them home. And we will say they were on a spinner, but then they also threw up. And so they need to go home and then we need to watch for symptoms. Now, we can't force you to go get a COVID test. It's just the recommendation. Alright, so students that do not get tested will need to quarantine for 14 days. So if they show any of those symptoms, they're going to have to stay out of school for 14 days. And they, again, it's the best way to keep everybody safe. And our teachers would really appreciate just making sure that they don't get sick while they're here. If a student tests positive, they will need to quarantine for 10 days. And so usually if you take them to go get tested and you have to wait a few days, you're right about that 14 mark anyway from 14-day mark when they start to show symptoms. But they have to be free of all symptoms for 24 hours before and within those 10, after those 10 days in order to return. If a student's test is negative, they can return to school after being symptom-free for three days. So if it was because they didn't like the spinny things so much, they'll probably learn not to get on that right after lunch. And then they will be able to return back to us after they get a negative test because they haven't thrown up anymore. What we're going to ask is that all of our families communicate with us what their, what health situation is to email nurse@amplus.academy. That is a private email account that has been set up and will be monitored by our school nurse. And it is to help us effectively track exposure. So when we send home a student, we're able to say this is why they're not coming. But we would appreciate the communication with our families to let us know if you've kept your son or daughter home because maybe they have been exposed by somebody else and you've just kept them home. Please let us know. It's just helpful that we're all on the same page. We are willing to contact and let the teachers know that the kids will not be in the classroom for those reasons. Should you give us permission to disclose that it was because of COVID? But we cannot share personal health information with anybody without that express information. We can tell teachers when kids are not allowed to be back in class. So if a student is not allowed back in class for 14 days, then we can give that date to the teacher so that they understand that if the student does walk in from carpool one morning, that that's, that student needs to be sent to the office. Let's see, did I say all that? Oh, thank you. Students must also quarantine for 14 days should they have close contact with anyone who tests positive. So, close contact is considered within six feet for cumulative 15 minutes over 24 hours. So, even though they have their masks on, if somebody tests positive in the class, this is why we're going to go ahead and quarantine the whole class. If the mom, or the dad, or the brother, or the aunt, or the uncle, or the dog, I think dogs can get it, I've heard, I don't know. If anybody in the household tests positive for COVID, please keep your kid home. We know they're excited to come. We know that we've made progress and they really like being here, but we really need you to keep them at home. And again, when we expand this to four through six, four through seven, excuse me, it's going to be the same policy. Again, please do not send them if they have any symptoms, contact the nurse. In the event that one of the students is symptomatic and tests positive, then the classroom teacher as well as the students attending will be sent home. Again, that will be no more than 15 people. But that's a lot of people who then we would recommend go get tested. If nine of those 15 then test positive, then we are shutting the entire school down for two weeks. So, please do not send your son or daughter to school if they have any symptoms. If they're able to participate, positive or not, anytime a student needs to stay home, we are encouraging them to please take advantage of the distance learning platform that is ongoing and that will continue to improve as we figure out how to do hybrid. Absences are recorded based on the student's participation in the various learning environments. So participating via distance learning is, is, counts for attendance the same way as if they have signed up for hybrid and they're here in person. It's the same thing. Again, we will not be disclosing the names of students or staff who have tested positive when we have to let you know that you, that your son or daughter has been, has a, has had a positive contact with COVID. We're not permitted to do so. Please don't call and, and demand to know who it was that brought it to the school that has shut everything down. We're not going to tell you. We're not, we're not storming castles with pitchforks about this situation. We're just trying to make sure that we're all being responsible and considerate of everybody around us. And then, like I said earlier, it's nine cases, nine ongoing total cases. We'll shut it down to make sure that we can, can adequately, adequately clean the building and reset everybody's health, health meter and, and then come back and kind of jump back in that. So again, the emails for any kind of illness and concerns are at nurse@amplus.academy. If you have ongoing health concerns, if you have something that might make, if there's a condition maybe where your son or daughter does throw up, maybe there's some sort of a reflex situation. Or there are, you know, ongoing issues with allergies or things like that. Please make sure it's documented with our, with our nurse. So, a lot of you have registered and you get to the health form and it's like, yeah, they're fine. But if they have ongoing headaches, maybe, you know, different things can cause headaches and things like that. We want, we need to know that so that we can take those things into consideration when it comes to that return date for kids. So please just, you can send that information to nurse@amplus.academy. So, okay. So there's that for elementary. We're going to move into the secondary presentation, which is going to be kind of a lot of repeat just kind of about the structure of our school. If you're here joining us for secondary, thank you to our parents of our older kids. We are, I'm joined tonight with our assistant principals. They're all here. And our managing director, Rochelle Hewlett is here. And then our director of student support, Mr. Nick Hewlett, who's serving right now as our COVID czar. He's giving us all the information and has been really important with our transition plan as we move back and forth. I appreciate you being here and taking the time to be invested and to hear the things that we have. I appreciate you being here and taking the time to be invested and to hear the things that we have to say. I am incredibly grateful to be here and to be a part of this team. I am loving the things that we're learning and I'm looking at these as opportunities for growth for all of our kids and our staff and our faculty. But this is, this is hard. And we are working harder every day than we did the day before. And we are happy to do so for the kids that we love. I want to praise and thank our secondary teachers who are working so hard to do all the things for the kids and making sure that they are staying in touch with the, the students that they have. They have on average 180 kids that they're responsible for. Some, they have never seen their face yet because the kids don't like to turn on their cameras or haven't heard their voices because it's a real intimidating thing to be able to speak. And they're making attempts to make sure that they connect and trying to be respectful of the boundaries and the different versions that work best for your family. Probably for our secondary families, what I'd encourage you to do is please communicate with the teachers. I looked at some of the feedback from parent teacher conferences this morning and I'm glad to see so many of our parents took advantage of that opportunity to speak with the teachers and to get some feedback about how things are going with their classes and, and to let us know what you need more information and help with. We are, again, trying to do all of the things the best to our ability, but this is uncharted territory. And we are finding resources and support for best practices and better implementation and streamlined approaches that are addressing the needs for some kids that want more work and other kids who are overwhelmed. Having, we're having conversations with parents who are having to shift kind of what their, what success looks like because we have a lot of brick and mortar expectations when distance learning does not provide those opportunities for us yet. I'm gonna say yet. I'm incredibly sensitive to our seniors and I am excited that our student council development for student leadership is expanding so that we can plan things in a distance environment that will recognize and be an important part of the senior experience. And more importantly, for all of our kids. I mentioned this earlier and I meant to, our, our programs and things that have been such an important part of our culture here at Amplus Academy for so many years are going to continue. I hope you enjoyed the activities we did for Veterans Day. That's such a highlight of everything that has happened here in years past. And, and we look forward to those types of things continuing. They're obviously gonna look different right now because we have to do those assemblies and things like that from distance. But we have wonderful innovative faculty and staff who are finding more and more creative ways to answer all of their requests and things that they know are really good for kids and our families. And so doing things like the veterans activities, our drama teacher is trying to figure out how to do an entire play and share it via Zoom. They're really being creative. We've got our music teacher who's inviting students in to come in and, and practice and play instruments and, you know, just many, many other examples of innovative and creative conversations are happening with teachers and students. The, the secondary platform is a lot of responsibility for the kids and for the parents to hopefully help them navigate through those things. Some of our kids are thriving. We're getting a lot of reports that there's kids who really are enjoying kind of some of the freedom and flexibility that they have by taking advantage of the asynchronous option. Other, other kids are not doing well. And so we want to know how we can best support them and to share some idea and how to be successful and productive. The number one indicator of success in distance ed is creating good relationships with our teachers. And it is really hard for our teachers who are having one-way conversations with the kids. Some of the parents are very, very connected with the teachers and we're still just trying to get a hold of the kids. So we're encouraging everybody in grade seven through 12 to create those conversations through Google meets, using those Wednesday office hours to have conversations, asking questions via email, making sure that we are, you know, knowing what everybody's individual situation is, is really helpful. We have a lot of kids who are working and taking advantage of asynchronous learning because they are working. And it's helpful for the teacher to know that. We also know that a lot of our secondary kids are helping younger siblings. And so it's not necessarily, not necessary that, not necessarily that they don't want to be on their English teacher's Google classroom presentation, but they're, they're busy helping their second grade sibling make sure that they can navigate through those presentations. So we recognize there's a lot of different situations. We've asked our teachers to be considerate of that. It's really hard for teachers who know that the success of kids is higher if they are attending class. And so while we cannot mandate that students participate in learning in the moment in those synchronous live sessions, it is highly encouraged for them to participate in those. That was one of the questions that was submitted. Is it required for them to attend live sessions? And it is not. What we found with the pacing was that sometimes when the teachers put everything on early in the week, that we had a lot of students who were trying to work ahead, they wouldn't perform as well because they hadn't been through the instruction. So please go through the lessons with your teacher before you start to do the actual assignment so that you're not doing, or now that, I don't know who's listening, if there are students out there, that you're not doing the assignment more than once, but that you're allowing the instruction to come and to sink in. If you need extra time with assignments, communicate that with the teachers. That's really helpful for them to know. It's a really kind of shifty thing to try to help kids develop the accountability measures that we want them to have as, as good product, productive citizens. They need to be held accountable to due dates and, and we want to make sure that our high standards are met with education and, but at the same time, if, if you're working a day or two consistently behind, then it's going to constantly look like you're late. And so the teacher really needs to know that that's, that's what's working for you and for your family so that they can make adjustments with, with this different scenarios. And, and there's again, 180 different scenarios that the teachers are dealing with every day while they're trying to upload content and make sure that the videos that they're recording are posting and, and to do all of the things that we're asking of them. So I've got some time to answer some questions. If you have questions, I'm gonna ask that the administrators that are here with me, that they share those. And we will encourage everyone to go ahead and put their questions in the chat right now.
Oh, can you just give out the information really quick for athletic director?
Yes. Okay. Athletic director information is being posted.
Please update us on protocols for next semester for secondary students. So maybe.
Okay. Yeah. So protocols for secondary students for next semester. I'm very hesitant to overpromise and underdeliver because I think everybody's really looking forward to the chance to getting kids in. We do have, right now, the, the opportunity to consider more students, but we are trying to make sure that we are successful at the pace in which we are moving. So when we look at different hybrid models, we're, or I mean, numbers of kids that can come back hybrid. I'm, I'm an optimist, so I'm hopeful that we'll continue to be able to bring more people in. Of course, when the other building is finished, that expands our opportunities to have more kids in there. So bringing back K through three is our first phase. Bringing back four through seven is our next phase. And the last phase would be grades eight through 12. Our secondary students, it's a little bit more complicated when we look at how we're going to bring students back because they move classes generally speaking. And so we're looking at very creative answers and how to make sure that their exposure is limited and that we are taking into account their safety and the safety of their teachers. But we recognize how helpful it is to have in-person contact. It's, it's exciting that we have other programs that are starting, different clubs that are, that are starting to move forward even just virtually so that the students have more connection opportunities. And for second semester, we are definitely looking at the opportunity to, to having more secondary students back in the building. Again, I'm hesitant to overpromise. There's just a lot of things that we don't have control over right now. So I just want to be very careful about, you know, saying absolutely, we're gonna do that. Cause I would, I would hate to add to the disappointment and, and difficulty that this year already has been. So it's, it's in the plans. There's nothing that I would love more than to have, have everybody to be back. And so we're, we're anxiously engaged in setting up those foundations so that we can get those things ready when, when we get the all clear to do so and to be able to do so well and safely.
Are these ones that you guys can answer them specifically? The ones in the chat? Seems like they need to be answered specifically. That they need to reach out to you specifically. One thing just says about reminding teachers to put due dates on assignments they should put the to-do list in the classroom.
Yes. The to-do, the to-do, the to-do, to-do, the to-do list on the, on the Google Classroom. There's, there's teachers who are, you know, in effort to try to alleviate some of the stress for kids by putting hard deadlines and they have very flexible deadlines. We're discovering if you don't put a deadline, then it doesn't show up in the to-do list. And again, that's how kids are looking at what I need to be working on specifically to turn in. So I know that a lot of our departments have already had that conversation. I'm looking at the assistant principals in secondary and they're nodding, yes, they know. And the teacher should be updating that so it pops up on their to-do list. If you see that there's a to-do that isn't due until the end of the quarter into January, that's because the kids have been assigned those assignments and they have the opportunity to go ahead and work on that. We don't want them to wait until after, after Christmas break, but we want to, you know, honor those requests that will put those due dates on there and that the kids can, can again, self-paced. Organization has been a huge learning curve for a lot of our kids and not having the academic planners and things that we're used to having when we're in an on-campus platform has made for, has made that transition even more difficult. We recognize that. And so I appreciate the, the students who have reached out and talked to their teachers and the, the parents who've asked for specific tips as far as how to, you know, keep track of the different things that have come due. If you're saying that students are getting assignments turned in, our kids are really good critical thinkers too. So we're finding out that if they want it to be off their to-do list, they can submit sometimes a blank document. And then the parents are like, I'm watching. They, it's turned in. It's not on their to-do list anymore. Why did they get a zero? A lot of that is because there was nothing on the document. And so those conversations have been hard ones to have with some of the kids who have figured out that that's a good, quick way to get their parents off their case when it comes to their different assignments. Now, that being said, technology is not perfect. And so if it is there and they have done it in their Google Suite, it's in their Google Drive, they can resubmit things. Teachers are not permanently, pardon me, are not trying to accept assignments and then not put the grades in for them. But we just need to be talked, like communicate that with the teacher. Just say, I, I thought they did this. Can you please tell me why this is shown as missing in the grade book? So that the teacher can know and look, we're also finding out sometimes kids are submitting things in the wrong place, not because they're trying to, again, make things difficult. You know, they just don't know what they don't know until we have that conversation and communication. So please encourage your kids to advocate for themselves to email the teacher and say, I did this on this night. I thought I submitted it correctly. Are you sure you don't have it? So that the teachers get a chance to kind of look through things and make sure that they can update their grades. You should be seeing on Infinite Campus as grades start coming in, as soon as the teacher saves, that those grades are going to be updated constantly. So as the teacher inputs something in, it should save and you can get notifications however you've got your Infinite Campus set up so that we can make sure that as the teachers have a chance to do the grading, those grades are updated as soon as possible. Okay. 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 Joy missed any mention of sports. Will any be offered? Right now, we are putting, we've got small groups for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and flag football for girls in grades nine through 12. Please contact Tyrell Cooper. His email is tcooper@amplus-academy and he is our athletic director. So he can direct you all the information you need. One of the questions is who's reviewing the Achieve 3000 program from administration? So we have all attended the, all being all the assistant principals and myself, attended the training for Achieve 3000. There are thousands and thousands of articles that the teachers can utilize and that they can assign to the classes based on different standards that they're looking to improve, different needs that they are hoping to address within the classroom. So we have, we have looked at the program and, and seen the different articles that are being, that are available. We have spoken with the teachers about making sure that they are vetting through those articles and making sure that they're using them to support the activity in the, in their classes. It's gonna be best for each, for the students in the situation. So. Oh, okay. Gotcha. So for, for our, there's some special population students who qualify for additional services. And so we're reaching out to them individually so that they can get the supports they need as far as opportunities for in-person education and things like that. So that's something that we started back at the very beginning and, and we're just making sure that all of the students know how to check their email. There are a lot of questions coming through. I cannot read all of these and talk. Sorry. Somebody asked about the PAC meeting. I haven't heard how to participate in the PAC meeting. There is an email that we, there was a, a meeting last month. Time is a weird thing. And I'll go ahead and send a follow-up email and we'll post it on our website so that you can go ahead and sign up. There's different committees for whatever you're interested in being part of. But we, like, that's when we need to put together a committee or we're looking for different parents. I just got an email from Ms. Clark, who is our health teacher, and we need parents to review our sex ed policy. So that meeting will be the beginning of December. And there's very specific specifications about which nine people, we need to have nine people on the committee to review the sex ed curriculum that we will be presenting starting in January, second semester, well, February, second semester. So if you're interested in that, then we'll go through those, through the PAC committee. I can't promise when we're gonna be back to school. That is totally out of the power in the hands of anybody who works here at Amplus Academy. So the questions and the feedback, when we're looking for feedback, that's gonna be helpful. It's not, when are we coming back? We don't know. We're, we're working towards expanding as, as we're permitted and that we feel safe and comfortable in doing. And that's going to be supportive for our teachers and, you know, making sure that we can adjust things based on the information we get in, in real time. So a lot of those things, like I said, with K through three, at the end of Thursday and Friday, when we first came back, we had a whole list of things that we needed to adjust and make sure that we got in line and in order before we even start talking about bringing additional kids to school. So. Health is offered in 10th grade health and, somebody else correct me, is health eighth, seventh and 10th, excuse me, 7th grade and 10th grade. Okay. I would, I appreciate the feedback. That was a question about electives. Can you read it again? There's supposed to be lessons with assignments and electives. So if you want to email me, it's sbarlow@amplus-academy. I will follow right up on that. There should be for electives. When it came to the reentry plan, we looked at different ways we could accommodate the needs of our kids in secondary, especially grades nine through 12, that we could per. There should be, for electives, when it came to the reentry plan, we looked at different ways we could accommodate the needs of our kids in secondary, especially grades nine through 12, that we could per. Prepare them to graduate and then we needed to make sure that we were doing so thoughtfully. And so to be able to offer an elective is, is a gift that we were really excited about. And so I am hoping that the teachers are, anyway, we're going to follow up on that. So if you'll email me and let me know who you're talking about, that's not supposed to be how that goes. We're going to make sure we've hit on the questions that were submitted at 6:30. Hang out with us here for a minute. Parents, if you need help, please just, please email your teachers or email me or. Make an appointment and come in and, and talk to me. There was a very sweet and frustrated dad who could not, said, I cannot handle all of these logins. This was about week two or three. He's like, that's my job. I just have to get them logged in and I'm struggling. And we brought on clever so that we could hopefully streamline that. Hopefully it's been helpful. Anything else? Anybody that I missed? Any other last questions? Please type them in if we've missed them. We're trying to just make sure that, that we answer all of your questions for, for those of you who were able to join us tonight. If options for electives have already been, the electives have already been assigned. But if you need to email the counselor, again, A through L is Ms. Sanchez, Angie Sanchez, A Sanchez@amplis.academy. And M through Z is T Smythe, S M Y T H@amplis.academy. If you would like to speak with them about the situation with electives, please go ahead and email them or you can email the teacher.
Oh, I see this question. Then can I expect teachers to post grades in the campus?
We have asked this, that was a question about posting grades in Infinite Campus. So we have requested that every teacher post two grades a week in Infinite Campus. They may be accepting other assignments and doing different types of check-ins and stuff like that for information that won't be recorded in Infinite Campus. But for the most part, it, it shouldn't be work assigned unless it's going to be recorded. Please be patient. They are doing so many things at once that sometimes the grading of those assignments, especially if they're bigger assignments, isn't going to be the quickest turnaround. But we've extended offers that we can help them with grading and things like that as much as we can. So that they, we can have a quick turnaround. We know that's a really important platform for you to be able to, to know how they're doing and where they're at. And, and what we have to do to address their needs, so.
Is Achieve 3000 replacing classic literature?
Achieve 3000 is not replacing classic literature at our school. We are still considered, are still very much a fan of a classic, a classic education model. One of the, one of the things that Achieve 3000 does do is it helps us meet the reading informational text standard. And so it also helps make sure that we are meeting those standards at their level. So. All right, we are going to bid you all a very fond farewell. This is my wonderful team. They're getting in my bubbles, so I'm going to mask up. But I just want to thank them all for their work that they're doing and thank you for being here and for helping. I think we lost one. She down? But thank you all, parents. We appreciate you. We love you. We love your kids. We are working hard every day and then coming back the next day to work harder. We want to be smarter. We want to be kinder. We want to be better and we can't do it without you. So thank you so much and we look forward to staying in touch and, and spending a lot more time at a safe social distance with one another. So have a wonderful night. Thank you.